Morning, everyone. We're gonna get started. Ask the visitors and guests to retire behind the rail. And as the members take their seat, we will come to order. Thank you. To give her an invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Pastor Dinet M. Ray of Kingdom Life Christian Center. She is here today as the guest of Councilman Bobby Heenan. I would ask all guests, visitors, and members to please rise.
Good morning, City Council.
Morning.
If it is custom for council, I ask that you bow your heads. If not, we understand. Dear Heavenly Father, I thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. I thank you for your many blessings and for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life and for the measure of health that we need to fulfill our callings for sustenance and friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing our appropriate responsibilities. I thank you as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us so from your boundless and gracious nature. In the Scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, this assembled council today. I am asking that you would graciously grant them the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our city and of our times. That you will grant them a sense of welfare, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people. For your Scripture also says that if the people prosper, the city prospers. I pray that you will grant them a keen thirst for justice and righteousness. I pray that you will grant them the confidence in what is good and fitting. I pray that you will grant them the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. I ask that you grant them personal peace in their own lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set here today. Please give them an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Philadelphia. I pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor, for those inspiring words. Thank you. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, April 27, 2017. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, April 27, 2017, be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded. That the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, April 27, 2017, stand approved. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. The next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests of leave of absence today.
Chair, thanks to the gentlemen. The Chair now recognizes Councilman O. on behalf of the minority.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the minority, there are no requests for leaves of absence.
Thank you, Councilman. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to welcome and thank everyone who has taken time out of their busy day to come down to witness their government in action. We hope you stay here. Today is a knowledgeable one, but more importantly, a pleasurable one, so much so that you come back again. So we really appreciate you coming down and seeing us today. This time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones, who presented a resolution recognizing Gina Snyder. With Ms. Snyder and those accompanying her, please join the Councilman at the podium. And joining Councilman Jones, we have Councilman Dom.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Philadelphia is a city of neighborhoods. It's often been said. I'd like to say, in my district, it is a city of small towns with various main streets that reflect the neighborhoods in which they reside. I was told by this young lady when I first got elected that I asked her how to become a part of the community. And she explained to me, well, to be a Fallser, it takes 20 years of involvement. So I want to inform you today that I'm halfway there. And then maybe in another 10 years, I will truly be a Fallser. I want to talk about this young lady for a second and say, words like dogged persistence and advocacy for East Falls, its community and businesses. Whether it's parking spots or farmers' markets or new offices and signs, whether it's issues of angle parking or dancing on the Falls Bridge, Ms. Gina Snyder has been a dogged advocate for both businesses and the community. Businesses like Enriva, the Trolley Car Cafe, La Busse, Fourth Street Cookie Company, all have come and discovered East Falls because of her continued advocacy. Managing issues such as the bike race, our neighborhood border disputes, she has been an ambassador on behalf of the community and businesses. And I'm thankful to have a partner, or had a partner and continue to have a partner, who has been fighting for that. Whether it's capital projects, getting money out of us for that, she has been there in the forefront. And in spite of all of those activities, she manages to raise children. And she, on this occasion of this resolution, is moving to France for a year to contemplate what she can bring back to East Falls. Similar rivers that border France, and so she's going to look and see what they do to bring back good things for us. So, without further ado, recognizing and honoring Gina Snyder on 14 years as Executive Director of East Falls Development Corporation. Whereas Gina Snyder, Executive Director of the Falls Corporation, has served in that position for all 14 years. Whereas, East Falls Development Corporation provides community information for East Falls businesses, residents, visitors, including up-to-date information on activities in East Falls, business opportunities, real estate, recreational activities, bars, and restaurants. Whereas, EFDC started as a wholly volunteer organization with almost no budget. Determined to uplift the organization, Gina developed multiple funding streams that have put the corporation on sound financial footing with a budget that has grown to over $200,000 per year. Gina, I don't know why you're going to France. We need you here. Whereas, Executive Director for the EFDC, Gina has worked tirelessly to encourage new investment in the business district and to assist local property owners' efforts to improve the facade.
Whereas, Gina has championed several key projects that are of great significance to members of the East Falls community. She worked with the city's mural arts program to create new murals under the Twin Bridges and secured funds to light the Falls Bridge and renovate the historic Bathy House, now the Trolley Car Cafe. Gina also helped to establish the gateway to East Falls, a pedestrian island with signature signage to calm traffic and welcome people to the neighborhood, as well as a dance on the Falls Bridge, a major event that has grown into a regional attraction. And whereas, Gina was also instrumental in adding a parking lot and on-street parking along Ridge Avenue and installed streetscape improvements with new pedestrian scale streetlights. She also brought in Farm to City and started the East Falls Farmers Market.
Whereas, in addition to her day-to-day work in the community, Gina also has been involved in citywide economic development efforts, including 10 years on the Board of Directors of the Philadelphia Association of Community Development Corporations, where she helped originate the Commercial Corridor Working Group. She also started and led the Northwest Commercial Corridors Coalition, a working group of organizations in Chestnut Hill, Mount Airy, Germantown, West Oak Lane, Roxborough, Mannionka, and East Falls. And whereas, in March of 2017, Gina announced that she was leaving her position as Executive Director of EFDC, Gina's leadership has been invaluable in building EFDC's capacity to secure funding and implement projects. She has raised EFDC's profile with local and state agencies and leaves the organization with several well-advanced projects underway.
Wine, cheese, and truffles ain't a bad way to spend a year. Whereas Gina will spend the next year traveling with her husband and two children to the south of France for a year, now therefore be it. Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that it hereby recognize and honor Gina Snyder on 14 years as Executive Director of the East Falls Development Corporation. Further resolved that and engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to Gina Snyder as evidence of our sincere admiration of this entire legislative body.
And the Chair recognizes Ms. Snyder for remarks.
Thank you, Council President Clark. I, at this point, I'm actually very moved. I didn't think I would be. Just, I really want to thank Councilman Jones, the other support of the City Councilmen's. We started with Councilman Michael Nutter, who then became the mayor. And I particularly wanted to thank Council, former Councilman Wilson Good Jr., who started the Business Privilege Tax Credit Program, and I really want to honor him. That program and the support from Councilman Jones and the other councilpeople has allowed the East Falls Development Corporation to leverage millions of dollars in resources and to become another regional asset to Philadelphia. So I thank you very much for this honor, and I guess I wish you au revoir and adiós. And I will be back in a year, and we'll see what kind of adventures are in store at that point. Thank you.
Thank you. The next order of business is communications, and the Chair requests that the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the Chief Clerk. And, Mr. Decker, would you please read those messages?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on May 1, 2017, I signed the following bills, which were passed by Council at a session on April 20, 2017. Bill numbers 161060, 161112, 170005, 170006, 170007, 170008, 170019, 170021, 170107, 170193A, and 170291. And I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body, a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Auburn redevelopment area identified by house number and street address as 2246 East Cambria Street, and an ordinance approving the fiscal year 2018 capital budget, providing for expenditures for the capital purposes of the Philadelphia Gas Works, including the supplying of funds in connection therewith. And an ordinance constituting the 14th supplemental ordinance of the General Gas Works Revenue Bond Ordinance of 1998, authorizing the City of Philadelphia to sell either at public or private sale one or more series of gas works revenue bonds. And an ordinance approving a lease agreement between Philadelphia Gas Works by Philadelphia Facilities Management Corporation solely in its capacity as operator and manager of the city-owned Philadelphia Gas Works, and Germantown Realty Investment Group for certain premises located at 212 through 214 West Shelton Avenue. And an ordinance authorizing generally the continued issuance and sale by the City of Philadelphia of gas works revenue notes of the city, prescribing the form of notes and providing for their execution and payment, pledging certain revenues of gas works as security, adopting a rate covenant, and directing the imposition and collection of rates and charges sufficient to comply therewith. And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to convey to the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development all or part of a parcel of land located in the area bounded by East Ontario Street, Weechel Street, Tulip Street, and East Tioga Street for further conveyance. And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to convey to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority all or part of a parcel of land commonly known as 600 through 616 West Girard Avenue for further conveyance, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. You have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. The next order of business is introduction of bills and resolutions, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you. Good morning. I offer one resolution this morning.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. And I should mention that this resolution was co-sponsored by Councilmembers Blackwell, Gilm, Parker, O'Neill, and Greenlee. And I would like to speak very briefly, Mr. President, at the appropriate time on this resolution.
You tell me.
We can do it now.
Do you want to do it now, after the title is read?
So, three things. One, first, I need to say thank you to the sponsors that led to today's resolution, which better captures the intent of the previous resolution, and more importantly, has captured the attention of those among us who care about the issue. I'm appreciative of those co-sponsors and other members who have expressed an interest about this issue wherein their own professional experience has informed their expression. The goal is not to be adversarial. It's unproductive. While we seek to peel back the onion and seek answers to the questions, our hope in the long run is that we can offer recommendations to the school district and any other appropriate city agencies that can help us get our arm around this problem. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Would you read it?
A resolution authorizing the Joint City Council Committees on Education and Children and Youth to hold hearings reviewing the impact of permanently prohibiting the suspension of elementary-age students from the first through fifth grades in the school district of Philadelphia.
Um, Council, let me... This resolution, it will be on today's calendar. Chair recognizes... You okay? Today's calendar? Yeah, it'll be on today's calendar. You want to speak on that? You wanted to speak on it? You want to do it at the time when we call it up? Okay. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today. Oh, I'm sorry. I do.
Do? All right.
I have one resolution that I'm so happy to introduce. It's cosigned by everyone, and it's on your behalf.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thanks.
A privileged resolution honoring, congratulating, and recognizing Julia R. Masterman School students for being crowned world finalists in the Odyssey of the Mind International Competition.
Thank you. That will be on today's final passus calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer one bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Diamond Street, 10th Street, Burke Street, 11th Street, Norris Street, and Marvyn Street.
And that bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. Today, I offer one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution declaring May 2017 Brain Tumor Awareness Month and further recognizing Philadelphia resident Jennifer Ponnell for her efforts to raise awareness about brain tumors.
Now it'll be on this week's final passus calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. One resolution co-sponsored by Councilwoman Bass and Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution authorizing the Joint City Council Committees on Public Safety, Public Health and Human Services, and the Environment to hold public hearings reviewing and investigating major planned construction by PICO to build a massive electric substation at 2000 North 59th Street in West Philadelphia.
And that will be on this week's final passus calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Fiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President. I have two bills, one co-sponsored by you and Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance amending Title VI to the Philadelphia Code and Title II Health Code by authorizing the Board of Health of the City of Philadelphia to regulate the operation and maintenance of food establishments under certain terms and conditions.
And that bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Cambria Street, Kensington Avenue, Allegheny Avenue, Jasper Street, Clearfield Street, Helen Street, Elkhart Street, Emerald Street, Stella Street, and Frankfurt Avenue.
And referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Good morning, Council President. I have four bills and one non-privileged resolution. I'd like to speak on one of the bills and resolution at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance establishing a business improvement district encompassing certain taxable for real estate tax purposes hotels within the boundaries of the city and county of Philadelphia to be known as the Philadelphia Hospitality Improvement Levy District, designating the Philadelphia Hospitality Improvement Levy District Corporation to serve as a Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association for the district.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Clearly, our city is on a roll. Just last week, as we all know, we had the great NFL Draft here in our city. Recently, we also had the DNC, as well as the Papal Visit. And then some years ago, we started all this tourism development with the RNC back in 2000. However, it wasn't that long ago when the hospitality and tourism industry was not great here in the city of Philadelphia. Today's legislation creates an improvement district, which allows us to continue the progress that we have made in reference to hospitality and tourism in our city. We have approximately 8,000 employees at hotels throughout the city of Philadelphia, about 71,000 people that work in the hospitality industry. And this industry provides a living wage for people in our city and also provides an entry point for people to move up into other positions in the tourism industry. We need to continue and maintain the great progress that we're making in hospitality. This is one of our major sectors that bring dollars to our general fund and helps to provide entrepreneurship opportunities and economic development, not only in the city of Philadelphia, but throughout the region. And so as we continue to try to promote these great events in our city, you have other jurisdictions that are also trying to do the same. Recently, we all are aware, when the NBA All-Star Game decided to leave Charlotte because of legislation that was passed in their General Assembly, they were looking at coming to the city of Philadelphia with the All-Star Game. But because of some of the financial constraints that we have as a city, we were not able to successfully recruit the NBA All-Star Game to the city of Philadelphia. Through this legislation, we'll have the resources to do that and other great events that'll help to continue the progress we're making in our hospitality and tourism industry. I look forward to an engaged conversation regarding this legislation and look forward to support from my colleagues for its future passage. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance constituting the 14th supplemental ordinance to the General Gas Works Revenue Bond Ordinance of 1998, authorizing the City of Philadelphia to sell either at public or private sale one or more series of gas works revenue bonds.
Referred to committee.
And an ordinance approving the fiscal year 2018 capital budget, providing for expenditures for the capital purposes of the Philadelphia Gas Works, including the supplying of funds in connection therewith.
Referred to committee.
And an ordinance authorizing generally the continued issuance and sale by the City of Philadelphia of gas works revenue notes of the city.
Referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution initiating action to establish a business improvement district encompassing certain taxable for real estate tax purposes hotels within the boundaries of the city of Philadelphia and county of Philadelphia to be known as the Philadelphia Hospitality Improvement Levy District, designating the Philadelphia Hospitality Improvement Levy District Corporation to serve as a Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association for the district.
And that will be on next week's final passus calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one bill and two privileged resolutions. The first resolution recognizes Melanie Lassiter on her departure from PICO after 10 years of service, although she will be staying in the Exelon family, and it's being co-sponsored by the women of council, along with Councilmen Squilla and Heenan. our hospitality and tourism industry. I look forward to an engaged conversation regarding this legislation and look forward to support from my colleagues for its future passage. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmen. That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance constituting the 14th supplemental ordinance to the General Gasworks Revenue Board Bond Ordinance of 1998, authorizing the city of Philadelphia to sell either public or private sale one or more series of gasworks revenue bonds.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance approving the fiscal year 2018 capital budget, providing for expenditures for the capital purposes of the Philadelphia Gasworks, including the supplying of funds in connection therewith.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance authorizing generally the continued issuance and sale by the city of Philadelphia of gasworks revenue notes of the city.
Refer to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution initiating action to establish a Business Improvement District encompassing certain taxable for real estate tax purposes hotels within the boundaries of the city of Philadelphia and county of Philadelphia to be known as the Philadelphia Hospitality Improvement Levy District, Designating the Philadelphia Hospitality Improvement Levy District Corporation to serve as the Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association for the district.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one bill and two privileged resolutions. The first resolution recognizes Melanie Lassiter on her departure from PICO after 10 years of service, although she will be staying in the Exelon family, and it's being co-sponsored by the Women of Council along with Councilmen Squilla and Heenan. And the second resolution, Mr. President, I wish to be recognized after the title is read.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance legalizing an existing deck and fence encroachment at 5200 C Street.
And that will be referred to committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Melanie Lassiter on her departure from PICO after more than a decade of dedicated service to the city of Philadelphia.
And that will be on the final passes calendar today.
And a privileged resolution designating May 10, 2017, as World Lupus Day, on which lupus organizations around the world call for an increase in public and private sector funding for medical research on lupus, education programs for health professionals, patients and the public, and worldwide recognition of lupus as a significant public health issue.
And that will be on today's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes... Councilwoman, do it now? Okay. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. My colleagues may notice the purple flyer on their desk, which states that May is Lupus Awareness Month. This resolution does recognize May 10 as World Lupus Day. It's the day on which lupus organizations around the world call for an increase in public and private sector funding for medical research on lupus, education programs for health professionals, patients, and the public. This resolution is being co-sponsored by Councilmembers Reynolds Brown, Heenan, Gim, Bass, Blackwell, and Sanchez. And I also just want to encourage my colleagues, if we can, all remember to wear purple next Wednesday for World Lupus Day, and stop by the World Lupus Day Rally at Dilworth Park from 12:00 to 2:00 p.m. next Wednesday as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Good morning, Council President. I just want to know, I'm a week early on the purple on my tie. But I have one privileged resolution today, co-sponsored by Councilman Johnson, Councilwoman Parker, and Councilman Heenan, and the majority of council members.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Finance to hold hearings to examine the city's annual reports requirement as it relates to every city office, department, board, and commission that issues any permit, license, or other document for which a fee is charged in order to ascertain and discuss with the administration the current availability of these reports and, going forward, a schedule which sets out when these reports can be made available to council for this fiscal year and every fiscal year thereafter.
And that will be on today's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
Good morning, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Taupenberger.
Good morning, Council President. I have two privileged resolution. Friends Hospital being honored for 200 years of service to patients, co-sponsored by myself, Councilmember Sanchez, Dom, Jones, and Gim, and the other being the Philadelphia Shipyard 20th Anniversary, and that is co-sponsored by myself and Councilmember Johnson, Heenan, Dom, Councilmember Jones, and Parker.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution recognizing June 10, 2017, as the 20-year anniversary of Philly Shipyard in South Philadelphia, and honoring its excellence in the art of shipbuilding, which continues the legacy of shipbuilding within our region and nation.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing May 19, 2017, as the 200th anniversary of the admittance of the first patient at Friends Hospital in the city of Philadelphia, and honoring Friends Hospital as being a steadfast leader in the moral treatment movement and providing recovery-oriented care to hundreds of thousands of people in need.
Also on this week's final passes calendar, Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Knights Road, Red Lion Road, East Keswick Road, Morrell Avenue, and Byberry Creek.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill and one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to convey to the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development all or part of a parcel of land located in the area bounded by East Ontario Street, Weasel Street, Tulip Street, and East Tyoga Street.
Refer to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Auburn redevelopment area identified by house number and street address as 2246 East Cambria Street.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one non-privileged resolution and one bill.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And ordinance approving a lease agreement between Philadelphia Gasworks by Philadelphia Facilities Management Corporation solely in its capacity as operator and manager of the city-owned Philadelphia Gasworks and Germantown Realty Investment Group for certain premises located at 212 through 214 West Chelton Avenue.
And that bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution declaring May 4, 2017, as Children's Mental Health Awareness Day in the city of Philadelphia.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I offer two privileged resolutions co-sponsored by members Blackwell, Heenan, Quinones Sanchez, Bass, Dom, Squilla, and Green. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Philadelphia's Stefan Star, Michael Solomonov, and Greg Vernick as winners of the 2017 James Beard Awards.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring and thanking the University of the Sciences Philadelphia College of Pharmacy's Generation RX Student Chapter for its vision, leadership, and commitment in developing and successfully implementing a program to educate Philadelphia area pharmacists about increased access to naloxone.
Also on this week's calendar, that concludes the introduction of bills and resolutions. We will now move to the reports on committee. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee for a report from the Committee on Rules.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Rules reports 11 bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Rules, to which is referred Bill Number 160680, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Jackson Street, Broad Street, the Skulgle Expressway I-76, Vare Street, Passianke Avenue, and 24th Street. And Bill Number 170194, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by 29th Street, Sedgley Avenue, Ridge Avenue, and Glenwood Avenue. And Bill Number 170201, entitled an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by amending Section 14905 entitled Non-Accessory Signs by authorizing the Director of Finance to create a separate fund for revenue collected by the city with respect to advertising on municipal property. And Bill Number 170265, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Deveraux Avenue Extended, Keystone Street, Princeton Avenue, Keystone Street, Cotman Avenue Extended, Milner Street, Blye Avenue Extended, and the Delaware River. And Bill Number 170282, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 14900 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Signs by providing for new sign controls entitled 1900 Market Street Digital Display Sign Regulations. And Bill Number 170285, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 14300 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Administration of Procedures and Making Related Changes. And Bill Number 170306, entitled an ordinance to reinstate Bill Number 140439, amending Section 14502 of the Zoning Code entitled CTR Center City Overlay and Section 14602 of the Zoning Code entitled Use Tables, and to amend Section 14803 Motor Vehicle Parking Standards. And Bill Number 170310, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Aramango Avenue, Cambria Street, Frankfurt Avenue, the Railroad Right-of-Way, Kensington Avenue, and Lehigh Avenue. And Bill Number 170331, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Lehigh Avenue, 20th Street, Sedgley Avenue, and 22nd Street. And Bill Number 170333, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Roosevelt Boulevard, Adams Avenue, Arrow Street, Oxford Avenue, and Oxford Circle. And Bill Number 170335, entitled an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning and Title 18 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Commerce to provide for the preparation and distribution of project information forms with respect to certain development projects, to revise the requirements for neighborhood notice and meetings, and to make related changes. Respectfully reports it is considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair, one more time recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of the bills that were just read into the record with the exception of Bill Number 170306.
Can I get a second? Thank you. It has been moved and probably second that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 160680, 170194, 170201, 170265, 170282, 170285, 170310, 170331, 170333, and 170335. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. Bill Number 170306 will be placed on the first reading calendar at the next session of council. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell for a report from the Committee of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Finance reports six bills out with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
The Committee on Finance, to which is referred Bill Number 170015, entitled an ordinance amending Section 191703 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Refund Regarding Credits and Due Dates. And Bill Number 170016, entitled an ordinance amending Title 19 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Finance Taxes and Collections to Include Transfers Between Stepparents and Stepchildren as a Transaction Excluded from the Realty Transfer Tax. And Bill Number 170205, entitled an ordinance amending Section 101000 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Fees to exempt the Land Bank from paying city recording fees in connection with property it acquires, amending Chapter 16700 entitled Philadelphia Land Bank to provide for the leasing out of land bank property, and amending Chapter 191400 entitled Realty Transfer Tax to exempt the land bank and certain transactions involving the land bank from payment of Realty Transfer Tax. And Bill Number 170308, entitled an ordinance constituting the 16th supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated General Airport Revenue Bond Ordinance, providing for certain amendments to the amended and restated General Airport Revenue Bond Ordinance. And Bill Number 170329, entitled an ordinance authorizing the City Treasurer on behalf of the city to enter into an amendment agreement with Wells Fargo Bank for provision of payroll banking services to the city. And Bill Number 170330, entitled an ordinance authorizing the City Treasurer on behalf of the city to enter into a professional services agreement with Citizens Bank of Pennsylvania for provision of payroll banking services to the city under certain terms and conditions. Respectfully reports it is considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Numbers 170015, 170016, 170205, 170308, 170329, and 170330.
Second. Thank you. It has been moved and probably second that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 170015, 170016, 170205, 170308, 170329, and 170330. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Quinones Sanchez for a report from the Committee on Appropriations.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Appropriations reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on Appropriations, to which is referred Bill Number 170332, entitled an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2017 from the General Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, the Grants Revenue Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, to the General Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, the Water Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, and the Community Development Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions. Respectfully reports it is considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Quinones Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the rules of council to be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 170332.
Thank you. It has been moved and probably second that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 170332. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. The Chair now recognizes Councilman Squilla for a report from the Committee on Streets and Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Streets and Services reports 16 bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on Streets and Services, to which is referred Bill Number 161108, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 11600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Construction Encroachments and Projections Over and Under Streets to provide additional requirements in connection with sidewalk closures. And Bill Number 170002, entitled an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades in a portion of City Plan Number 269 by relocating the Easterly House Line of University Avenue from a point approximately 545 feet north of Currie Boulevard to a point approximately 236 feet further northwardly therefrom. And Bill Number 170086, entitled an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades in a portion of City Plan Number 269 by relocating portions of the house lines and curb lines of Convention Avenue from 34th Street to Health Sciences Drive, and placing on the city plan two rights-of-way for drainage purposes within the vicinity of the intersection of Convention Avenue and Health Sciences Drive. And Bill Number 170203, entitled an ordinance authorizing the installation of all way stop signs at the intersection of 57th Street and Yaleusing Avenue. And Bill Number 170241, entitled an ordinance granting permission to Houston Small and Debra Wilson, owners and operators of Tasty Eats Food Truck, located in the right-of-way on the east side of 13th Street between Norris Street and Diamond Street, to install, use, and maintain certain electrical wires, conduits, and appurtenances in, under, and over the right-of-way on the east side of 13th Street between Norris Street and Diamond Street for the purpose of supplying electricity to said lunch truck. And Bill Number 170242, entitled an ordinance granting permission to Stefan Nego, owner and operator of Royal Tea Food Truck, located in the right-of-way on the north side of Norris Street between 13th Street and Broad Street, to install, use, and maintain certain electrical wires, conduits, and appurtenances in, under, and over the right-of-way on the north side of Norris Street between 13th Street and Broad Street for the purpose of supplying electricity to said lunch truck. And Bill Number 170264, entitled an ordinance authorizing Owen Kamihara of Barfred to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk café at 1040 North 2nd Street. And Bill Number 170281, entitled an ordinance regulating the direction of movement of traffic on American Street between Gerard Avenue and Thompson Street. And Bill Number 170283, entitled an ordinance authorizing Piedmont 1901 Market to construct, own, and maintain various right-of-way encroachments at 1901 Market Street. And Bill Number 170284, entitled an ordinance authorizing Brandewine Operating Partnership to construct, own, and maintain various right-of-way encroachments at 1900 Market Street. And Bill Number 170286, entitled an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on the 2600 blocks, 2600 and 2700 blocks of Winchester Avenue on both sides. And Bill Number 170289, entitled an ordinance amending Section 12701 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Bicycle Lanes by authorizing the Department of Streets to designate bicycle lanes in both directions on American Street from Jefferson Street to Lehigh Avenue, and for the removal of a travel lane on American Street in the same limits. And Bill Number 170292, entitled an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of O'Gance Avenue from Somerville to Bellfield Avenue. And Bill Number 170305, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 9200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Commercial Activities on Streets by amending Section 9213 entitled Farmers Markets to revise certain provisions relating to the permissible location of the Farmers Market on South 43rd Street near Clark Park. And Bill Number 170311, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 11600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Construction Encroachments and Projections Over, On, and Under Streets by adding definitions for electric vehicle and electric vehicle charger, and authorizing a new category of encroachment for which building permits may be obtained entitled Electric Vehicle Chargers. And Bill Number 170336, entitled an ordinance amending Section 12131 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Electric Vehicle Parking to provide for a time limit on the moratorium on new electric vehicle parking spaces. Respectfully reports it is considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair, one more time recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the first reading this day of the bills that were just read into the record with the exception of Bill Number 170- of the bills that were just read into the record with the exception of Bill Number 170289.
Second. Thank you. It has been moved and probably second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of the bills that were just read into the record by the Chief Clerk with the exception of Bills Number 170289. All those in favor will say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. Bill Number 170289 will be placed on our first reading calendar at the next session of council. The next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee with the suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had a first reading. These bills will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar at the next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the final passes calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following bills and resolutions are being called up for second reading and final passage calendars today. Bill Numbers 170412, 170413, 170418, 170120, 170121, 170122, 170123, 170124, 170140, 160010, 170243, 170334, 170108, 170139, 170142, 170374, 170168, and 170139.
Thank you, Councilmen. Before considering these bills and resolutions on the final passes calendar today, we will have our public comment session. It will go as follows. If you are interested in testifying on a bill or resolution that is on the final passes calendar today, if you not, have not already done so, I'd ask that you sign up at the table to my left. When your name is called, you will go to the middle of the council chambers. There's a podium. There's a device on that podium. When the light turns green, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. When the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to the guidelines and conclude your remarks. You will be given three minutes to testify. Mr. Decker, read the first name.
Joe Dennehall, commenting on 160010, 170142, 170374, 170168, and 170139.
Good morning. This is official decree of the people. Remand damis quo warranto, and as such must be acted upon and have remedy immediately provided. By continuing to use the DA Redevelopment Authority and Insurance Department, the council and the mayor appear to be violating oath of office laws and constitution. 18 U.S.C. 242, deprivation of rights under color of law. Whoever, under the color of any law, statute, ordinance, regulation, or custom, willfully subjects any inhabitant of any state, territory, or district to the deprivation of any rights, privileges, or immunities secured or protected by the constitutional laws of the United States or to different punishments, pains, or penalties on account of such or by reason of his color or race shall be fined not more than $1,000 or imprisoned not more than one year or both paracarms. Why are most paid for their homes? But I have been repeatedly, willfully, egregiously denied just compensation, trial by jury, and due process for my home, 1038 West Wyoming Avenue. Twenty-three years waiting for payments guaranteed by the Constitution laws while others were paid in as little as three years. Discrimination? The Constitutions require immediate remedy of this breach of law. Your oath of office requires you to act or face prison. 42 U.S.C. 1982, 1983, 1985, 1986, 1987, 18 U.S.C. 241, 242, 2381, 2384, P.A. Constitution, Article 1, Sections 1 through 11, 26 P.A. CSA 703, 705, 708, 709, 712, 713, 716, and other laws listed in SCOTUS 1589, 65, 141330, 144056 appear violated. I call for the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations to investigate, prosecute all involved in the theft and illegal deed transfer of my home, 1038 West Wyoming. The denial of God-given 42 U.S.C. 1982 property rights for 23 years is egregious, extraordinary, oath violating, and requires immediate remedy. A just government must obey the rule of law. This color-of-law government must have its charter of government revoked until constitutionally compliant government is installed. Public servants cannot refuse their sworn duty to act any more than a fireman can refuse to fight a fire. The sovereign people require constitution and laws be enforced. Jail is required for all who violate oath or law. It takes a lot of cooperation to create and allow monumental corruption.
Thank you for your testimony.
George Wally, commenting on 170408.
Morning. Hi, how's everybody doing today? I wanted to propose just a small revision to the Resolution 170408. I am in favor of prohibiting the suspension of elementary-age students from first through fifth grades. However, I propose that there should be an exception for violent cases, for violent cases, such as when a child may be in danger or vice versa. And also, rather than suspending children, I feel it would be more beneficial to provide training and resources to involve interventions that promote different values such as respect, tolerance, that promote community-together-ness, and also acceptance of others. For example, maybe loving-kindness meditation for different children in order to maybe decrease bullying or decrease violent behaviors in children or decrease aggression issues such as that.
Thank you very much for your testimony, sir.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the final passes calendar today. Mr. Decker, 170412.
A resolution urging the Pennsylvania State Legislature to adopt Senate Bill 1134, which seeks to enhance conviction integrity in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania by ensuring access to post-conviction DNA testing.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 170412 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 170413.
A resolution urging the Pennsylvania Legislature to reject Senate Bill 383, which would permit school personnel to carry concealed firearms in schools.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to speak on this resolution before I call for the vote, please.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you, Council President. Yesterday, Council President, in Sheltonham High School, there were four young ladies fighting in a school hallway. During that fight, four young men also joined in the fight, and eight teachers tried to break up the fight, where two of the teachers suffered concussions and one was actually knocked out. And as I watched the news last evening, we kept seeing the clips of these young people fighting and this teacher being knocked out. And so, today I am calling on our House, the General Assembly of Pennsylvania, specifically the Senate, to reject Bill 383. During a report, the Pennsylvania Senate and the House both studied the issue of allowing school personnel to carry firearms and found it not advisable. The Pennsylvania House Select Committee on School Safety explicitly stated in 2014 that it did not recommend army general school personnel. In the same report, testimony from state agencies, law enforcement groups, education groups, and district attorneys led the select committee to recommend that only, only school police officers or security officers be armed on school property. An advisory committee on violence prevention formed at the direction of the state senate echoed the same conclusions of the House Select Committee when it wrote in its 2014 report, "Police officers undergo extensive training in the use of their weapons, and teachers do not. Therefore, it is unreasonable to expect a teacher to have the same firearms competency as a law enforcement officer and not sound policy to assign such responsibility to a teacher." And so, if you watched the video yesterday, and I remember in my district at John Bartram High School, another teacher was knocked out, it just shows how this particular bill, if passed, will put all children and teacher and school personnel in harm's way. Although a person may have the right to carry an arm and they may be certified, they may not all, they may not be able to defend themselves in an environment that may be hostile when a fight starts. And who would say if a young person have a mental health issue or a young person just totally knocked the teacher out and take their gun? And so, I just want to ask for affirmative vote from all of my colleagues in rejecting Senate Bill 383. We understand that people have a right to carry firearms, and I recognize it, but we want to use common sense. In this particular case, this isn't common sense. I think it put more people in harm than it would as relates to keeping our young people safe. Thank you, Councilman, Council President, and I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilman. It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 170413 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 170418.
A resolution initiating action to continue the Mount Airy Improvement District beyond its termination date in an area that generally includes both sides of Germantown Avenue from 6300 to 7631 and certain blocks of streets that intersect that portion of Germantown Avenue for which Mount Airy Improvement District, Inc., a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation, serves as the Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 170418 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 170120.
A resolution reappointing Pat LaBelle to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 170120 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 170121.
A resolution reappointing Timothy Snowden to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor? Those opposed, ayes have it. 170121 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 170122.
A resolution appointing Danielle Delray to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. 170122 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 170123.
A resolution appointing Patrick Schillen to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
I move for the adoption.
Second. It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And 170123 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 170124.
A resolution appointing Mary Hummel to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District.
And one last time, Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
Second. It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. 170124 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 170140.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Girard Avenue, Ninth Street, Brown Street, Eighth Street, Spring Garden Street, and Broad Street.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment on your behalf to Bill Number 170140. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council, and I move for the adoption of the amendment.
The motion for 170140 has been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution, I'm sorry. Bill Number 170140 has been amended. It will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, 160010.
An ordinance amending Chapter 2200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Recording of Deeds to provide for further action by the Department of Records in cases where the department reasonably suspects that a deed has been mistakenly recorded and that a fraudulent transfer of the real property described therein has occurred.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neill, Councilman O, Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Conrona Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Eyes of seventeen and nays of zero. Majority of members present voting affirm that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 170243.
An ordinance amending Chapter 1100 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Definitions, Construction, Penalties, and Enforcement to authorize the Law Department to standardize the appearance, numbering, and formatting of the Philadelphia Code without the need for further code amendment.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neill, Councilman O, Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Conrona Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye, eyes of seventeen and nays of zero. Majority of members present voting affirm that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 170334.
An ordinance amending Chapter 91100 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Fair Practices Ordinance, Protections Against Unlawful Discrimination by adding a provision authorizing the Commission on Human Relations to order a respondent to cease operations as a remedial measure.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neill, Councilman O, Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Conrona Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye, eyes of seventeen and nays of zero. Majority of members present voting affirm that the bill passes. This may be a little out of order, but Councilman, you okay?
I know during speeches.
All right, thank you. And the bill passes. Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, 170108.
An ordinance authorizing the Director of the Free Library of Philadelphia and the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into a sublease with the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development tenant under a master lease with the landlord for space in the building located at 1500 Spring Garden Street to house the library for the blind and physically handicapped.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neill, Councilman O, Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Conrona Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye, eyes of seventeen and nays of zero. Majority of members present voting affirm that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 170139.
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into a sublease agreement with the Philadelphia Municipal Authority for use by the city of a portion of the premises located at 1500 John F. Kennedy Boulevard.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neill, Councilman O, Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Conrona Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye, eyes of seventeen and nays of zero. Majority of members present voting affirm that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 170142.
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into a sublease with the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development for use by the city of the premises located at Vicalla Hill Center, 421 North Seventh Street.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenly, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O, Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Connerina Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes of seventeen and ayes of zero. Majority of members present voting affirmative the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 170168.
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into a sublease agreement with the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development for use by the city of the premises located at 1101 Market Street.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenly, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O, Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Connerina Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes of seventeen and ayes of zero. Majority of members present voting affirmative the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 170309.
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to acquire fee simple title or lesser real estate interest to all or a portion of a parcel of land located in the area bounded by East Bristol Street, O Street, Leaper Street, and the Frankfurt Creek.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenly, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O, Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Connerina Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes of seventeen and ayes of zero. Majority of members present voting affirmative the bill passes. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution authorizing the Joint City Council Committees on Education and Children and Youth to hold hearings reviewing the impact of permanently prohibiting the suspension of elementary age students from the first through fifth grades in the school district of Philadelphia introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring, congratulating, and recognizing Julia R. Masterman's school students for being crowned world finalists in the Odyssey of the Mind International Competition by Councilman Greenly on behalf of Council President Clark.
Actually, Blackwell. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution declaring May 2017 Brain Tumor Awareness Month and further recognizing Philadelphia resident Jennifer Ponnell for her efforts to raise awareness about brain tumors introduced by Councilman Heenan.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Joint City Council Committees on Public Safety and Public Health and Human Services and the Environment to hold public hearings reviewing and investigating major planning construction by PICO to build a massive electric substation at 2000 North 59th Street in West Philadelphia introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Melanie Lassiter on her departure from PICO after more than a decade of dedicated service to the city of Philadelphia introduced by Councilwoman Parker.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution designating May 10, 2017 as World Lupus Day on which lupus organizations around the world call for an increase in public and private sector funding for medical research on lupus, education programs for health professionals, patients, and the public, and worldwide recognition of lupus as a significant public health issue introduced by Councilwoman Parker.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Finance to hold hearings to examine the city's annual reports requirement as it relates to every city office, department, board, and commission that issues any permit license or other document for which a fee is charged in order to ascertain and discuss with the administration the current availability of these reports and going forward, a schedule which sets out when these reports can be made available to council for this fiscal year and every fiscal year thereafter introduced by Councilman Dom.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing June 10, 2017 as the 20-year anniversary of Philly Shipyard in South Philadelphia and honoring its excellence in the art of shipbuilding, which continues the legacy of shipbuilding within our region and nation introduced by Councilman Taubenberger.
Chair recognizes Councilman Taubenberger.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing May 19, 2017 as the 200th anniversary of the admittance of the first patient at Friends Hospital in the city of Philadelphia and honoring Friends Hospital as being a steadfast leader in the moral treatment movement and providing recovery-oriented care to hundreds of thousands of people in need introduced by Councilman Taubenberger.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Taubenberger.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution declaring May 4, 2017 as Children's Mental Health Awareness Day in the city of Philadelphia introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Philadelphia's Stefan Starr, Michael Solomonov, and Greg Vernick as winners of the 2017 James Beard Awards introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. Along with Councilman Al, Dom, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and thanking the University of the Sciences Philadelphia College of Pharmacy's Generation RX Student Chapter for its vision, leadership, and commitment in developing and successfully implementing a program to educate Philadelphia-area pharmacists about increased access to naloxone introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage, Council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Chair recognizes, I'm sorry, are there any speeches on the part of the minority? Chair recognizes Councilman Taubenberger.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. It's always a sad moment when one loses a staff member. Shannon Marietta has been with me from the beginning of my time in council and she's helped our office very, very well. The happy thing is she is going back to her home state of Georgia and to continue the study of the science that we practice here every day in this chamber. Political science is an important subject. I see her as, at some point, being professor and a leader in the teaching of this important science, which is the essence of our democracy. And I would like my colleagues to join with me in a round of applause for Shannon Marietta. And if she ever needs a guest lecturer, I'm available.
All right. Thank, thank you, Councilman. Hey, congratulations. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I just wanted to alert the council members that next Thursday, May 11, I will be hosting a recognition ceremony for the Philadelphia Gold Key Winners. They are the winners of the region's Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. Over 65 students from Philadelphia, so I'm sure a student from every one of the districts here in Philadelphia, have won these awards. They are provided by Scholastic Art Writing, Philadelphia Writing Project, and the Philadelphia Arts and Education Partnership. That will be 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM in the mayor's reception room. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And on the part of the majority, chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. So today, May 4, we celebrate internationally, International Firefighter Day. And, you know, unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to put in a resolution today honoring all the firefighters. But I will next week and make sure that all members of council had the opportunity to side on. The commissioner, in his new philosophy of training and, you know, being the commissioner here in the city of Philadelphia, was able to host international firefighters from France for the past several days and, you know, discussing their leadership philosophy in France, discussing how we operate and do our command here in the city of Philadelphia. So I want to thank the commissioner on this day for his innovation in his firefighter practices. I want to thank his command. I want to thank Local 22. I want to thank all the families of the past and present who, who live, all right, on the front lines every day. So firefighters dedicate their lives to the protection of life and property. Sometimes that dedication comes in the forms of countless hours volunteered over many years. In others, it is many selfless years of working in the industry. In all cases, though, it is the risk ultimately of the ultimate sacrifice of a firefighter's life. International Firefighters Day, which is today, every May 4, is a time where the world's community can come together and recognize and honor the sacrifices that the firefighters make to ensure that their communities and the environment is safe as possible. It is also a day in which current and past firefighters can be thanked for their contributions. Just yesterday, the commissioner, its command, and Local 22 celebrated at the Living Flame, you know, with, with, with our guests. So they were able to contribute in memoriam there. So International Fires is a third, as I said, is observed every May 4. And on this date, we are invited to remember those who have sacrificed their life in serving our community and dedicated their lives in protecting us all and keeping us safe. At the same time, we today can show the support and appreciation as we pass a firefighter, as we pass a station, and just thank them for their service. Thank them for protecting our equipment, our environment, protecting us. And we here recognize that as we give them the tools. I think they had an awesome budget submitted in today, in this year's budget unlike we haven't seen in the past. And it's my pleasure to support that as we move forward. So I want to thank every firefighter, every paramedic, and every family member of Local 22 and their command for their service. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, let me thank my colleague Maria Sanchez for recently inviting me up to tour the Pepsi plant where we, Coca-Cola. No, it's okay. Wrong brand, same issue. So the Coca-Cola plant in her district where we had opportunity to interact with workers and some of them a little bit salty about the sugary drinks tax. But I appreciate the opportunity to see what was going on on the first hand, and I thank her for that. I also want to thank Councilwoman Bass for her, as Blondell Reynolds Brown says, laser beam attention to small neighborhood stores and their conduct within our community, whether it's dealing with shot glasses or other things that detract from the quality of life. But I have to tell you, I was in my district and I went to the opening of a fresh grocery store up on Monument Road. And in aisle seven, my man Dupree came up to me, a little bit overweight. He was waddling a little bit. And he said, and I promised him I would give the message to you. He said, "Do you know how much my Pepsi or Coke and my cigarettes cost nowadays because of y'all? You've raised the cigarette tax, you raised the sugary drinks tax. It's costing." So in my mind, I did the quick calculation. It was about $1,250 if you get the, you know, on sale kind of thing. And I understood his plight. He coughed as he walked away. I don't understand why he's smoking and drinking Pepsi, but that's his personal choice to do. I think about when my mother and my father sent me to the corner store to get their Pepsi and their cigarettes. My mom, Virginia Slims, my father, Paul Mauls. I want to say this, that I had to bury both of my parents. One because of lung cancer and the other, she had a stroke. And when we and my brother found her at the height of a snowstorm, there was a cigarette that had burnt out in the ashtray. So she, she went out the way she wanted, and I get it. So when these taxes come up now, I think about the fact that my granddaughter is in pre-K. She wasn't in pre-K a year and a half ago. So it, it, I love my man Dupree. I love my granddaughter more, and I understand that. So there are two trips that we had. I went up to the ShopRite. And one thing, my good friend Jeff Brown fought tooth and nail about this. He had us all on milk cartons down there talking about what, what we did. But I appreciated his upfront forthright advocacy against it. But when I went there yesterday, he had a whole section, and I put this photo on everybody's desk, where he had a whole section that was dedicated to non-products that are non-sugary drink impacted, the whole section, fruit juices and all of that. And I thought that that was a kind thing, a responsible thing to do for the consumers. So the second trip to my barber shop, my barber laid me out, said that in the corner store where he goes, and I won't identify it, they were charging him for 100% apple juice, applying the tax to it. And it hurt me because, you know, you should not gouge the people. To apply it to product that are not eligible for that is wrong. And I want to encourage that LNI and revenue, take a look at that. You cannot on the, you know, at our expense politically, then apply it and you reap double profits off of that. That is wrong. So I'm hoping that we can, as we look at the benefit of this, we're over 12 million in revenue, God willing, that will go to the purposes that it was supposed to go to, that those of us who are not good neighbors, those of us who are not good stewards of those businesses, do not take advantage and gouge poor people as a result of their inability to distinguish what is taxable by sugary drinks and what is not. And so we're going to keep an eye towards that. I'm going to join my colleague Bass and my colleague Sanchez to make sure that those things don't happen to inner-city people unfairly. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. The legislation we passed today and the ongoing issues in our city that prompted it are critical to the people of Philadelphia. During the hearing on this, this piece of legislation, I mentioned how this body, over many decades, has been a strong advocate for progressive policies, becoming a national leader regarding the issues of rights for minorities, particularly in addressing LGBTQ concerns in the city of Philadelphia. Nevertheless, in the city of brotherly love and sisterly affection, discrimination continues. Last fall, I heard stirring testimony at the Philadelphia Commission on Human Relations hearing from various advocates and others in the community, some who have been fighting for equality of treatment and equality of access to public accommodations and equality of human dignity, human dignity over those same decades. I remain concerned that although we have come far, but we still have a long way to go to obtain equal treatment for each of our residents. This legislation is a way to prompt fairness to those who would not do so otherwise. The bill empowers the Commission on Human Relations to issue cease operation orders against businesses that has ruled, that it has ruled have engaged in severe or repeated violations of the existing Fair Practice Ordinance anti-discrimination provisions without effective efforts to remediate those violations. In other words, after a fair hearing process, when the opportunity to work with the commission to rectify its discrimination, businesses could be closed down for discrimination that is particularly severe. That is an easy bar to clear for violations that have largely existed for decades and far more equitable than the treatment experienced by those whom this bill seeks to protect. We should not have people who live in our city or people who visit our city being treated differently based on fundamental aspects of their identity by the establishments that operate in the city of Philadelphia. Considering where we are as a country, as a nation, and as a city, we need to make sure that we're sending the message to all people in the city of Philadelphia, regardless of your ethnicity, gender, sex orientation, we are, that we are a welcoming city. Philadelphia is the city of brotherly love and sisterly affection, and we invite all people to participate in our society and economy to help foster growth and share our prosperity. I believe this legislation helps ensure that all people in our city and all visitors to our city have that assurance. And I would like to thank my colleagues for passing this legislation.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes- Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I have two comments today. One is on the resolution that Councilman O. and myself and others sponsored about the James Beard Awards. I just want to give the full impact because in Councilman's schoolhouse district, we now have the best chef in the United States in Michael Solomonov at Zahav. And by the way, Council President, in your district, we have Greg Vernick, best chef Mid-Atlantic at Vernix on Walnut Street.
What's the address? I need to.
If you need a reservation, I can get you one. Two thousand block of Walnut Street.
All right, go check it out.
And in the United States, it's interesting, Stephen Starr was named the best restaurateur in the country, and the best restaurant in the country is the Stephen Starr Restaurant in New York City called Lake Kukue. It's pretty amazing, though, that Philadelphia, LA didn't get one award, San Francisco didn't get any. Philadelphia got them all, which is amazing for us. I just want to congratulate everybody on that award. The other piece of news, this is the completion of Philly Tech Week. I just want to share some information from the Greater Philadelphia, the Economy League of Greater Philadelphia. So they gave out a report this week, and they said of the top ten cities in the United States, from two thousand eleven to two thousand sixteen, Philadelphia has had the slowest employment growth of the top ten cities. The range has been seven to sixteen percent, seven to eighteen percent. We're at seven percent. That's the bad news. The good news is from February of two thousand sixteen to February of two thousand seventeen, the Bureau of Labor Statistics just reported that Philadelphia was the third best in the country for job creation, third best in the country for job creation. The other piece of interesting news is that tech is a big area which, which we can develop in, and I know that you're a big supporter of that. And while our overall employment is low, we rank second in the United States in the last seven to ten years in creating the most tech jobs of any city in the country. Twenty-five percent of every new job in Philadelphia from two thousand two to two thousand fifteen was in tech. And one-third of the jobs in tech don't require college degrees, high school diplomas. It's huge for us. IT employers in Philadelphia, the reports that are struggling to fill jobs in the tech world, several tech jobs provide careers on ramps for middle-class workers with, again, one-third not required by college degree. The big issue for us is to educate our students from kindergarten to twelfth grade and adults on the path and career opportunities in tech. Some of those organizations, I'm just going to mention, Coda by Kids, Sylvester's doing a great job with that, Philly Tech Girls, just a few of the options. But here's the big piece, the economic job multiplier of technology is five to one. So every time we create one job in tech, we create five more jobs somewhere else. As an example, we use the Port of Philadelphia, which is important, it's one point six. Tech's the future. And the other interesting statistic is that the average income of technology jobs is thirty-nine thousand dollars. The salary is higher than any other field, thirty-nine thousand. One of the things we need to do in Philadelphia is to raise our average salaries across the board. So tech's really our future. We need to expand dramatically, and whatever we can do as a body to advance tech, I strongly recommend it. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes is Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. You know, I learned as a student at Mansfield University, a quote by Dr. King that said, "What affects one directly affects all indirectly because we are all a part of mankind." Last Thursday, I had the humble opportunity just to speak at a home-going service of a young man by the name of Lonny Sims, who was the son of a good friend of mine that I grew up with that was murdered as a result of sinister gun violence. We also recently saw in Texas the death of a fifteen-year-old at the hands of police officers as he was going home from a party, and that police officer was fired based upon fabricated evidence or fabricated story about how this young man ended up murdered. Last week, I talked to a mother about the joys of fatherhood, and she mentioned to me that when she found out that she was having a baby boy, she was sad. And it hit my heart because as a woman, particularly an African-American woman, she should not have to be concerned about having a African-American baby growing up, particularly a male, growing up in America. Last week, I stood with my good friend in State Center to Anthony Hardy Wams in southwest Philadelphia, calling on Governor Wolf to restore the Illegal Gun Task Force funding that funded the task force to the district attorney's office in partnership with the Attorney General's Office so we can remain focusing on the issue of youth gun violence here in the city of Philadelphia. We have a task force on the opioid crisis, we have a task force on historical preservations of buildings, we have a task force on initiative known as Vision Zero to make sure bike lanes and streets are operationable for people to go out on Saturday just to enjoy themselves. But we've been dealing with this crisis since I've started my life as an activist back in nineteen ninety-eight, starting my organization, Peace Not Guns. Each year, we have thousands of shootings of young African-American males between the ages of eighteen and twenty-five, and we have hundreds of homicides that take place here in the city of Philadelphia. And so in the near future, I will be establishing my own Youth Gun Violence and Prevention Task Force to begin focusing on an overall strategy, bringing together the various city agencies and stakeholders that have an interest in making sure that we address this epidemic. It's a complex issue, there are a variety of different social nuances that have an impact, such as poverty, such as education, but we can't sit idly by while these young men are dying on the streets in the city of Philadelphia. Certain neighborhoods are safer than others, but I believe that when you step up to the plate, and I believe when you take the issues that are most complex and put them on your shoulders to try to address, it does well for all of our neighborhoods and ultimately the citians. And so when I think about how we focus on this issue, I think about those two young men, Jordan Edwards, Lonny Sims, that could be Isaiah Mandela Johnson, that could be Elijah Kwame Johnson, growing up here in this great city. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Very important issue, and it's way beyond time that we elevate it to the level that we need to elevate it again. Thank you. At this time, there being no additional speeches, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourn until Thursday, May eleventh, two thousand seventeen, at ten AM.
Thank you. It's been moved in property. Second, that the council stand adjourn until Thursday, May eleventh, two thousand seventeen, ten AM. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Thank you all very much.